Turn on my mic. Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. The time is 5:00 PM. The date is November 27th, 2023. We will start this meeting off, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence. Madam President, can you lead us in the Pledge of Legions, please? Let me remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and should not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, anyone desiring to speak at the City Commission meeting shall complete a comment card for each agenda item the person wishes to address, which shall include the person's full name and address and the numbered agenda item. And that card should be presented prior to discussion beginning on that particular agenda item. And if those were not followed, the comment card will not be recognized. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11.1 on the agenda is being removed at the request of the protester. It is the appeal by a pro-lun corporation of their denial by the procurement official. That item is coming off the agenda.
All right, very good. Thank you. We now have the State of Education report. Is...oh, there she is, okay. Before we go too much deeper into the meeting, let me take a point of personal privilege and wish Commissioner Lambert a happy birthday. Commissioner Lambert, happy birthday. No, we're not going to sing "Happy Birthday" to you. Okay. Ms. Whitfield, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Absolutely.
I will give a short presentation. First of all, thank you guys so much for caring enough about education to allow me to come. So hello to the mayor and commissioners and happy birthday, Commissioner Lambert. I wanted to just talk to you a little bit briefly today about what's going on with your schools in West Palm Beach. I will keep it very short and leave time for questions if you all have any. I'm happy to answer any questions of any kind, even beyond what the presentation is about. But I'm going to talk a little bit about what's going on academically with your schools here in Palm Beach County, the discipline issues, and what's going on with those as well, our acceleration that we are trying to put our children, and I'll explain that a little bit more, and our legislative priorities. So if there's anything that you want to help us with or assist, I'm happy to share that as well. So briefly, let me talk about the schools. You have Dreyfus School of the Arts, Box School of the Arts, Bear Lakes Middle School, Belvedere Elementary, Coniston Middle School, Egress Lakes Middle School, Forest Hill High School, Grassy Waters Elementary School, Yager Middle School, Northborough Elementary, Northmore Elementary, Palm Beach Lakes High School, Palm Meadow Elementary, Roosevelt Middle School, and South Olive Elementary. It's a very large public school system here in West Palm Beach. Most of the students, this past year, we just had an entirely new test come to us from the state of Florida around standardized testing, so a test for our students that we do at the end of the school year. And that has had an impact on our scores because it is a new test. And so we're seeing a little bit of changes. The biggest changes that we're seeing is within English Language Arts, so like the reading component of scores. You're going to see a little bit of a dip that's happened throughout the schools. Hasn't been huge, but it's about 40% across the board at all grades. We're looking at 40 to 50% of the students reading at grade level on every one of their years that we do it. It is not great news, not something that we're proud of by any means, but it is something that's consistent with state scores. And so what we have been doing here in Palm Beach County is trying to tackle that in a new way, and a way that I'm very proud of. I served on the Early Learning Coalition for many years, and I really enjoyed working with the Early Learning Coalition. And we have developed a partnership with them where we are putting more of an emphasis on kindergarten readiness. And so having, making sure that our students have an opportunity to participate in a quality voluntary pre-K program for our four-year-olds, making sure they have that opportunity early on. And it's something that we have really put an emphasis behind just this past year. With that emphasis has come, we've created a lot of work that parents can do at home with their students, which means that there's videos that have gone out, there's been... Oh, my apologies. That is 100% never on. I'm interrupting myself. So the kindergarten readiness focus that we've been doing is we've put out videos and we've had qualified teachers in English, Spanish, and Creole that have put on these videos. You can see those on our website. They talk about things, skills that your child should have before they become a kindergartner. Other things that we have done is we've created kindergarten readiness kits, and we've put them at all of our kindergartens, all throughout the school system. And a parent, when they come in and register their child for kindergarten, can get this kit and bring it home. I actually got one for my three-year-old. I went and it took me months to get it, actually. You'd be amazed at how hard it was. But I got it, and I was home with my three-year-old, and we played with it. So I got to see what we were giving out, really quality things that had letters and numbers, really things that we just want them to know. So I think that this is going to have a large impact overall on our kindergarten readiness rates, and it already has shown that it did. So last year, our scores for kindergarten readiness, we do it at the beginning of every school year, within the first two weeks, every kindergartner takes a test to learn about, to see how, where they are and if they're ready for kindergarten. And this past year, our numbers went up 3% across the entire district of students ready for kindergarten. So we think this increased emphasis is going to be the thing that really changes it for Palm Beach County. So I'm hoping to see these numbers over time start to go up. But even with that being said, and that's what I think is the best news around reading here in Palm Beach County, we have put a lot of resources and a lot of effort into this. And so I'm hoping we're going to start to see a change and see us break away from the pack of the rest of the state and hopefully see these kids being able to read on grade level, to a greater extent. And as you know, it really is tied a lot into the poverty levels at schools. So everything that we can do to kind of alleviate the issues that come along with poverty, hunger, homelessness, all of those things, they really do tie into our ability to educate a child. So when you think about those on a global perspective, that is something that's very important to me personally. And I think when you start thinking about it, just in the way that we're training our students to become, you know, educated and productive members of our community, we have to think about what goes into their day-to-day life so that we can help them to grow and to be able to start reading on grade level. As far as your math scores, they've actually been quite good throughout the district. And specifically here in West Palm Beach, we've seen increases across the board. It could be attributable to that new test, maybe the, you know, it's a little bit of an easier or more straightforward question, something like that. It's all good things. We're very happy about it. We've seen some really great scores going up. And we've actually created a participation metric within our school system to make sure that students have an opportunity to participate in an accelerated class. So that's your AP, your ACE, things like that, those kind of courses that you might remember from high school and middle school. We want to make sure every student has an opportunity to participate in those. So we have been checking to make sure that they do, and what we are seeing is that students throughout Palm Beach County, about 90% of them, actually even here in West Palm Beach, 90% of them are participating in an accelerated course. So I'm extremely proud of that. And I think that is something that really shows. We were a little worried when we first started. People kept saying, "Well, how do we know that these kids that are behind are going to do better or well if we put them in an accelerated class?" Well, it turns out what's happened is if you give them the opportunity to excel, they do. And so we are seeing that really across our school system. As far as discipline rates are going throughout the school system, what we're seeing is that COVID is over, all the kids are back, and the discipline rates are kind of going back to where they were. We had a bit of a dip during COVID, and that was something that, you know, we all knew was because the children really weren't there on the building. Now they're all back, and so we're seeing it kind of normalize. So nothing really tragic or horrible. What I would say is that if you are interested in a specific school's discipline rates, we do make that available to everyone on our website. We have a discipline dashboard where you can go, and I've actually played with it extensively for a constituent who wanted to know, you know, how many kids are doing this at one school versus that school? And so I've sat down and gone through it. It is very easy to use, but you can say, you know, "In 2023, at, you know, Roosevelt Middle School, what were the incidents?" And you can see based on level of incident and then what that means. So we do categorize each one, Level 1, Level 2, Level 3 Incident, 4 and 5, too. Excuse me. And so you can actually look into there and see what they are. Excuse me. Okay, so just talking briefly about our legislative agenda, there's a few things that I think you should know about the school system, excuse me. We have something called a Concordant Score, and it is something that the state has come forward with many times and said they want to make education more rigorous in the state of Florida. That's the wording that they generally use. And we believe in rigorous education. That's always been a very important thing. But some students really do struggle with our standardized tests. So what the state of Florida has done for many years is they allow us to not just use the tests that the state of Florida comes up with, but we can also use the SAT and the ACT and PERT scores in the past. And those scores, we can take and we can use them as a way to help graduate students when they are not doing well on the Florida standardized test. Well, our Concordant Scores have been, they have been, they have changed what passes now, what counts as a passing grade on the SAT. So you take the same SAT you took when you were in high school, and whatever you get on the English and whatever you get on the math, you can actually look at those scores and see if we can graduate you from high school instead of using the Florida standardized test. So they've made it slightly more difficult, and that's been something that they've sort of put out there as we're going to start sticking to this soon. Last year, they gave us a pass because they wanted to make sure that we didn't have an impact on our scores. But this year, they are saying that they are going to stick to the new Concordant Scores. In the event that that does happen, I want you all to be aware, as a commission, that we anticipate our district-wide graduation rates should potentially go down, could potentially go down about 10 points. So that could be, you know, real impact on the community. And so what we're doing is we're asking the state of Florida and the legislature to please give us a little bit more time with this, especially since we just got a new standardized test. We want to see if that new test, and as I said, the math scores are better, so maybe that is something that can help if the standardized test that Florida has come out with is more of an accurate representation of what they have learned. Maybe we will do just as well with that, and it'll be okay. But with that, it's, I want you all to be aware, when you see the scores come out this year, if you see that dip, remember I told you about it, okay? So it was, it was coming. Other things that I think are really important when you're talking about our legislative priorities, just to give a really, really high-level overview, is school safety and security. It's always been important. We get some money from the state. We don't get enough. The money that we use to provide a police officer in every school, to provide, you know, the single-point entry and all of the infrastructure changes we've had to do, come from the two referendums that we have asked for the community for. So we're very grateful to the community for giving us that. So one of them is the property tax referendum. The other one is the half-penny sales tax. Half of it came to us, and the rest came to you all in the county. Those funds are some that we use from our community to really strengthen both our safety and security, our mental health, and then money for teachers and other facility improvements. We always ask the state to please step in and really raise the amount that they give us so that we don't have to put as much pressure on our referendums to be able to pull that off. Also, teachers and staff, many times we are getting, we are getting money from the state that just really isn't commensurate with what it costs to live here in Palm Beach County. It is very, very difficult. And as you all know, we have some of the lowest-paid employees at the school district, and so I think about them a lot and how difficult it is to live here in Palm Beach County. So we give as much raises as we can, but we are dependent on what the state gives to us. We don't really have a lot of power over millage, or we have a little tiny bit of power, but very little power over what we are taxed. And it's really dependent on the state. And then, as you all know, Palm Beach County is a donor community, so we send more money to the state than we get back. It goes to some of the more impoverished communities throughout the state, but it really does mean that we're giving more money away than we're able to use for our own school system. So that's been a really, a really big, a big piece of this. We also have added in things like metal detectors that you're going to see at your schools. We've approved that recently. So we piloted it at four schools, and we are now going to be expanding it to every high school, and eventually we'll do middle schools. But these are very expensive programs. It even comes with additional staff time because we have to ask people to come in early, and we have to pay them to be able to stand there to watch and make sure. But they're not, just so you know, they're not metal detectors like TSA. They're more like going to Kohl's and like walking through, and you just see the little stands on either side of you and go kind of quickly through it. So those are pretty easy. And then we have a lot of really small things about curriculum and accountability. Again, with the Concordant Scores is a big piece of it. But I want to leave some opportunity for you all to be able to ask me a question. Oh, one other thing is the vouchers. Let me just say that before we go to questions, and then, and then we can, you know, go, anything you have a question for. Last year, the state of Florida passed a voucher program. It means that basically anybody who attends school, be it public or private, gets their funds that they have contributed in. As a county, we get around $8,000 per student. So if a family wants to go to a private school, they can apply to get funds from the state and have it go to fund that private school. It also works for homeschooling education as well. This past year, it actually wasn't that horrible for us because the state allocated funds to the tune of about $400 million to make sure that there would be no impact on the state education funds for public school education, and charter school education falls under that as well. That was wonderful, really held us so that we didn't have to end up, you know, losing any of our funds. We just want the state to continue doing that and actually expand the amount of money because I think as parents start seeing this as a way that they can recoup some of the money from the private school education, it's going to expand the program. And we know that if every student that's in private school right now decides to take this funding, it's going to be a hit of $4 billion to the state of Florida's budget. So we need to make sure that they don't take that from public education. So that is one of our, our big pushes. But with that, I will say, do you have any questions or concerns about your schools? And I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for that presentation. On the voucher issue, have you noticed a change in population, a dip in the population as a result of this new program?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. We've actually done very well and very proud of this. We did increase our population in the school district, 1,000 students this year.
Oh, fantastic.
So we have not been impacted negatively by it. It is definitely a possibility that it could happen, and it has happened in other places in the state. But I think right now, what you're seeing is just students who were already in private schools taking advantage of the program. Very few are leaving us, but we also have a really good product in Palm Beach County schools. I think when, when this came forward, we realized there is a bigger need for marketing within our system to make sure that we are the best choice. So with that, we actually hired a marketing director and somebody who's going to be putting out more information about our schools. So hopefully that will keep us competitive, but right now, we've actually held pretty strong.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, questions? President Warren and Commissioner Ward.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I'm curious about the, there were four schools that were piloted for the metal detectors?
Can you say that again? The four schools that had them, that got them this year?
And which schools were those?
Good question. So I know Seminole Ridge was one, John I. Leonard was one, and then there's two more, and I'm not totally sure. We tried to pick them throughout the county so they'd be more spread out. I'm not sure if anybody in West Palm got it, or if Palm Beach Lakes did it first. But now that we've done it, we actually, we picked John I. Leonard just as a good example because it is such a massive school. It's our biggest, has 3,500 kids. And my biggest concern was that there would be lines out the door every morning, and students wouldn't be able to get to class. We'd have to start school at staggered start times. That was the big worry. But we've been able to make it happen, so they do get through. So even at a huge school like that, we've gotten it through pretty quickly. We chose them in different types of communities so we could see how it would work with, with different students, different parents, and it seems to have gone really well. So now the purchase has been made. We just got to get them delivered and installed, and soon all the schools will have them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. When you were talking about our reading scores, obviously that's hitting home for me, and I know that, I'm appreciative that the readiness is, is being pushed when it comes to getting into kindergarten. But can you talk a little bit more about what you're seeing as far as, do we really think, is the answer, hey, they're not ready in kindergarten, they're going to, they're, once they're ready in kindergarten, they're going to maintain? Or is there a potential drop-off later on that we would need to kind of consider continuing forward on? I wouldn't want us to just put all our eggs and, hey, we're getting them ready for kindergarten, and then it plateaus and drops down again later on and...
Yeah, this is a really good point. So what, the best way I think to describe this situation is really about growth of a student. So if you imagine a student walks into school and they've got a year's worth of education in front of them, and a successful teacher would teach them a year's worth of education in a year. And that is, most of our teachers can pull off a year and a year. But what is happening when you get a student who's behind is you're asking a teacher to provide a year and a half worth of education to get them caught up to where they should be, or two years of education. And that time, actually, if we don't have a super-successful, I mean, we're talking an excelling teacher to be able to teach the rest of the class and then bring up the low-level students so that they can cover more ground than they're supposed to in one year? And we do actually evaluate that. How much education did this student get? Were they able to get a year or 1.1 year, 1.2 years? Like, how much can they cover in that time? So when a student falls behind, we say they stay behind. So if you have a student showing up on day one, ready for kindergarten, that student only has to cover a year's of education to be right with their peers and where we expect them to be. But if the teacher has to teach them all the skills they should have learned in pre-K and they're not ready, then they start behind and they stay behind, and you're asking them to hopefully get a teacher who's so amazing that they can catch them up. And hopefully that happens, but it is difficult. I think it would be hard for any teacher to really be able to differentiate. And so we put in extra resources and extra supports to hopefully make it a little easier. We'll send in ESE teachers, we'll send in extra tutoring and support. We do after-school programs to really catch them up. But it is always a challenge when they start behind. So if we were able to get them right on time, I think you'd see that they would stay. Really, just doing that one year and a year is, is very good. That would be, that's not too hard to do. We can pull that off.
Follow-up?
And then, I know this wasn't talked about at all, but could you kind of address, I'm hearing more and more that we're having to deal with, and this is all around, but how are we dealing with some of our students who are experiencing homelessness?
Yes, this is my favorite topic. Thank you for bringing it up. Actually, I went to a homeless meeting this morning about this. We, what we do at the school district is we count how many students we have that are homeless. Every year, we reset that number and we start counting again. So at the end of the year last year, we hit 5,000 students that were homeless, a little over, actually. And we've started counting this year, and we're almost to 4,000 already. So we count, kids have to reapply to get, they call it a McKinney-Vento designation. And that means that they get a little bit extra support. They're able to move from home to home without having to worry about their school changing because we know that has a huge impact on education. It's a federal law that we do this. Also, we try to provide connections with homeless liaison that helps to work, make sure that they have everything they need. Sometimes those homeless liaisons are working on things like housing, obviously, is number one. We try to make that happen. Also, they're, they're working on things like laundry detergent, or mom needs, you know, training for school, or what is it that's going to take to keep them housed or to keep them in a stable family? So they're working on all that. We only have, I believe, eight homeless liaisons at the school district. And we did put some of our COVID money into really upping that program. But I did talk to our homeless liaison today, the main person that's in charge of the program, and one of the things that really keeps her up is the parents, is the kids living in cars. Right now, we have 135 students that slept in cars last night within the school district, and they're participating in school every day, and they're sleeping in cars. And the really big stressor is until we can get them into housing, which, you know, obviously the whole community is working towards that, until we can get them into housing, they are living in their car or outside. And the moms are asking for gas cards because they want to leave the air on in the car and you run out of gas. So it's a very stressful situation for our families to be in, and as you can imagine, the impact on the education that happens with the students is quite great. So this is something I spend quite a bit of time working on. But we are rallying the community around these students always because the numbers keep going up. More people are going into these, having these issues. And any of the supports that we can have from our outside organizations to help them, you know, it's wonderful. So we're trying to make the connections a little bit stronger, and that's obviously something that, you know, as a city, we would love your help with at any time.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I know that this is a challenging time to be on the school board in Florida, and so thank you for all that you're doing. My question was just a little bit about the kindergarten readiness. It sounds like a fantastic program, but I know that it depends a lot on the parental participation, which is not the same across the board. I think one of the things I'm really excited about in West Palm is that we have the Bezos Academy coming to Roosevelt Elementary, which I think is going to be a huge addition to our, our community and, and helping kickstart, you know, a great education for some of our younger future leaders. But in terms of the programs that you already have that you're talking about, the kindergarten readiness, I mean, I think obviously every family is not created equal. Some parents might be working late or, you know, have a few kids to look after. It might not be, you know, easy enough for them to all get the same preparation from these resources. So I'm curious if there's other things that you recommend for maybe households that need a little bit of help with that kindergarten prep, if there's resources out there, if there's anything that you would recommend for the city to look into, ways that we could help, or anything like that?
Thank you so much, Commissioner Fox. I appreciate you bringing this up. This is, again, another passion area for me. I do have a three-year-old. I have a 16-year-old as well. When my 16-year-old was in, when she was four years old, and in a private program, we applied for the VPK dollars that the state has available to us. It is not income-dependent. Everybody can get these dollars. So it did take a big chunk out of what we had to pay as parents putting our kids through the VPK program. The problem, I think, is that the state only funds us three hours a day. And so anybody who knows a mom realizes that at noon is a really tough time to go pick your kid up for school and find someplace else for them to go. So that can be a real challenge. So one of our legislative priorities that I think has a really good shot this year is to create a full day of VPK. Other states around the country have done it. It is, I can't even tell you how valuable it would be to have a student getting quality education for an entire day the year before they show up. So this is something that the Early Learning Coalition puts a lot of effort behind. In Palm Beach County, we have a lot of early learning centers that are not related to the school district, private ones. My daughter goes to one right now. It is not dependent on whether or not you're part of the school to have a good school, school system to have a good school. We have good ones, they have good ones, they're all over the place. You can get funded for your VPK dollars no matter which one you choose to go to, but the thing that's most important is getting kids into a VPK program. Every child, I think, should be in one. And the situation where, you know, parents want to keep their kids home, if they choose to do that, we're talking, you know, very small numbers of people who are really able to stay home with their children in Palm Beach County. A lot of times, they, they may leave their child with a caregiver or grandma, somebody like that. If they're in that, if they are in that, if they do want to stay home, we do have little bits that they can learn. They can even do a summer VPK condensed program that is also paid for by the state. But I would recommend that, you know, you, you recognize that your child needs to be getting socialized, they need to learn how to sit still, raise their hand, you know, see how, the which way a book opens. They really need to have that time with other students because when they get into kindergarten, we are teaching from day one. And so we would really like it if they would participate in a quality program ahead of time. And if you want to know if your, if your program that you're sending your child to is quality, Early Learning Coalition has a hotline you can call, and they, they can recommend programs, they can tell you how your program is doing. So you can check as a parent, is this a good program to be in? But if it was up to me, every student would be in school But if it was up to me, every student would be in school starting at three. Because I think three is really, like, when things need to start happening for your child's socialization and education. And that growth over time is really gonna set them up to be ready to go when they get to kindergarten.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much, Ms. Whitfield. It's great to see you continuing to come in front of our commission here. I think that it's important, not only for us to be informed, but also for our residents to hear from a school board member, maybe in a different venue, if, if they don't normally attend your school board meetings. As you present, and as you have presented over the years, what I'm always listening for are, what are things that we can latch on to as the city of West Palm Beach that we can help be a good partner to the school district on? And I'm always thinking about our residents and their families' quality of life, about safety of our kids to and from school. And I know that those are some of the things that we've worked on through the years together. Today, what you talked about that I really latched on to were the kindergarten readiness kits. And I know that was a topic that my colleagues asked about as well. I think you've answered part one of my question, which was, when should we encourage families to start asking for these? And you've mentioned three years old as being the timeframe.
We don't have funding for three unless you have need. If there's need, you can get it at three. But at four years old, there is state funding for anyone.
And then you mentioned it was a little bit difficult for you to get one. So I'm just curious if you can tell us, what's the easy way for us to tell our residents to be able to get these?
So if they show up to kindergarten roundup, which is, we actually really did a good job this year. This is, I think, why we got so many kids signed up early. If you go to your, your local kindergarten, or whatever school you're planning on attending, sometimes we have choice programs, even at kindergarten, they, they have them there. I kept asking someone to bring it to the office, and that didn't work. So eventually, when I was at a school, I was like, can I have one of those? So that's why it was so hard for me to get, because I was trying to get somebody to transfer it. Didn't work. But I think, really, when you show up for kindergarten roundup, which is going to be in April, I believe, I'm not positive of which days, but generally in April, every school in the district is doing it during the same week. So we will be marketing it heavily. Please go get your child signed up for kindergarten. The other thing for everybody who's here, there's a, there's a little sneaky thing about this. If you show up on kindergarten roundup day, you can get your kids signed up for aftercare within your school that day for the next year. If you don't, it fills up within, like, some schools, it's like twenty-four hours. They, they've lost all their seats. So going on that first day is really beneficial, if you do need aftercare within your school. Otherwise, there are opportunities in the community that you can do aftercare, and sometimes there's buses. But people really like to use their school's aftercare, so that's...
If that's something that you can provide to us via email, that we can share, I know many of us share emails and newsletters with our constituents. I know that, whether that's our employees here at the city, or the employees that we work with, I know many would appreciate especially that aftercare tip.
Absolutely. And can I just say, when you talk about things that a city can do, I saw that we had Rafael Clemente, he's not looking at me right now. Hi, Rafael. I've known him for twenty years, and we always worked on urban planning together many years ago. And one of the things that we really, really need is to make sure that the places right around schools really are walkable and bikeable, because students, sometimes this is how they're getting to school. So if you have a bike lane and a sidewalk that's safe, and, you know, able for, for people to be able to use safely, I think that's a really important thing, because we are talking about, we only give transportation outside of two miles, unless there's extreme circumstances. So children need to be able to get to and from school safely. And that's something that a city really has a purview over, that we would love if, you know, when you're creating your plans, you're always thinking about the walk and bike zones around schools.
Commissioner Duzey?
Thank you so much for coming here and speaking with us today. And I, I think that it's always great when we have opportunities for collaboration with the school board as, as the municipality. And there's something that you mentioned before, and if I, we just go back briefly, because the statistics were quite shocking, that we have potentially five thousand homeless students in our district. And, you know, homelessness is an issue that, that this city and other municipalities are constantly, you know, dealing with. And the question I have for you is, is that homelessness by families in the school district self-reported? And if so, do we also have an idea of the geographic location in the county that they're located, so that maybe we could have our homeless staff, you know, we have one of the largest homeless outreach staff in the county, at ten full-time people? Maybe we, there's some opportunity for some collaboration, and maybe we can, you know, work with you on those residents that find themselves homeless in our city.
Well, thank you. Those are very, very good questions. So yes, it is self-reported. At the beginning of the school year, every parent will real, will probably realize that they got a questionnaire sent home. It's called the residency questionnaire. And within that, there's many, many different questions. It can be long and boring, and I'm really working to get it to be online. But I filled it out this past year for my daughter, so I know how long it can take to do. But our data processors input that data into the system. And anytime we know of a student that's struggling, the teachers and the staff will recognize that there is something happening there, and they'll make sure that residency questionnaire is filled out. And we are directing services to that student. Every school has at least one or two homeless students. We do keep numbers by school. As long as the number within the school is more than ten students, we can provide you that data on how many students are at each school, and I am happy to provide that for you. It is constantly going up every year. I would say the best way to do it is to get last year's May numbers, and then work off of that. The services that we provide are never enough for anything. So I, one of the things that I try to do, and I've worked on for many years, is providing backpack programs to our schools. We do it through our school food service department, partnering with outside organizations to bring funds in to provide food for the students to go home on the weekends. Obviously, if you're a homeless student who lives in a car, you don't have the ability to heat anything up. So the bags have to be customized for that. So we are always working on that to make sure that we're providing food that these students can go home with. We have a very broad definition of homelessness as well. So some people may be in a, a type of housing. It's just not secure housing. And we, we use that as a school district, because that's part of the McKinney-Vento program, what, what our rules from the federal government are. But I think it's good, because it really tries to put some protections around students who are in a very unstable home situation, because we wanna make sure that they don't get moved from school to school. And we wanna make sure that they're getting that extra consideration from the school. So we try our best to identify. Our team has been working really hard, and their numbers have actually gone up, I think partially because the community is getting more difficult to live in, but also because of their efforts. They've really identified more students than ever before. So we start with self-report, and then we really try to look. And I gotta tell you, every school I've ever been in, every teacher I've ever talked to, they know who the kids are. They just know. You can tell if they're not showering regularly, you know, they're coming in and falling asleep, because they haven't had a, a safe place to sleep at night, or they're sleeping in a room with many, many beds, and not a lot of quiet. You can tell which students are doing it, and the teachers really are that first line of defense to make sure that they know what's going on with their students, and getting them the resources that they need. When it gets to us, we just have to make sure we have the resources to give them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Well, thank you again for coming. Thank you also for your service to your community.
Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. Thanks for caring about your schools. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, commissioners, we will now turn to the consent calendar, items seven-point-one to through seven-point-five. Do you have any cards? All right. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Okay, Sandy Metcavich, seven-point-one.
Sandy Metcavich, West Palm Beach. Seven-point-one, resolution number two-nine-seven-twenty-three, authorizing the assessment of city liens in the total amount of one-hundred-and-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and four cents for unpaid water service, sewer service, stormwater charges for the month of August, twenty-twenty-three. Missing is the statement, the city places a lien on the property. Does the city ever foreclose on the homes leaving more people homeless? My most expensive utility bill is the West Palm Beach Water Bill. You occasionally vote in here. The city has come into excess property that is not needed for city purposes, blah, blah, blah. Are these actually homes that have been repossessed, because people are not able to pay their water bills? I can't fathom living in a house without water and electricity. How, how does somebody do that? How does somebody live in a home without water and electricity? I've been coming to these meetings since the end of Nancy Graham's term as mayor. I have never, ever seen the figure, one-hundred-and-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and four cents for unpaid water services. That's disgraceful. Anybody agree with me? Okay, I'm done.
All right, item seven-point-two.
Seven-point-two. Still Sandy Metcavich. Resolution number two-nine-nine-twenty-three, approving interlocking agreement between the City of West Palm Beach and the West Palm Beach Downtown Development Authority for the installation of a minimum of eight street trees within the downtown area, promoting the revitalization of the area. The city will utilize and dispense one-hundred-thousand dollars for the Large Canopy Fund, which will be matched by the DDA for total project cost of two-hundred-thousand dollars. That's twenty-five-thousand dollars a tree. Twenty-five-thousand dollars a tree. That's taxpayer money. Show of hands, who's getting a kickback from this? Somebody got friends or family that are gonna do these trees? Get a donation to your campaign? Do you people know which is a voting on? Do yous even read this stuff? Twenty-five-thousand dollars a tree. Two-hundred-thousand dollars for eight trees. Get me a shovel and the trees, and I'll come down and plant them myself, and I'll donate it to the city. How's that? I'm done.
Item seven-point-five.
Resolution, Sandy Metcavich, resolution number three-twenty-twenty-three-F, authorizes the amendment of the General Capital Acquisition and Fleet Replacement Fund Budgets, recognizing cash carryforward and providing appropriations for various city needs. Vehicle replacement, two million dollars. Five million is included in the year twenty-four, adopted general fund operating budget, and one million dollars in the fire assessment fee budget. I thought the fire assessment fee that every resident who owns a home pays a hundred dollars for, why isn't that designated funds? Is my fire department going out with things they need? Why are you, why are you taking a million dollars out of the fire fee? This in additional two million from one-time funding will enable the city to stay on schedule with its eight-million annual vehicle replacement plan. Excuse me. Question for you, Keith. Does this eight million dollars include a new taxpayer, fully-loaded SUV car for you again this year? And does your personal assistant also get a free car, courtesy of the taxpayers? City getting you a new car this year, Keith? You know, we pay the insurance, probably pay the gas, too. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions on consent, items seven-point-one to seven-point-five? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of consent calendars presented, items seven-point-one through seven-point-five.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Removed and seconded, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Item eight-point-one, resolution number three-oh-one-dash-twenty-three, authorizing the new gymnasium in Coleman Park at eleven-sixteen-twenty-first Street, be named the Paul G. Blackshear Gymnasium. Ms. Rockwell?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Leah Rockwell. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm here to present resolution number three-oh-one-dash-twenty-three, the Coleman Park Gymnasium naming request. So a little background. The naming process for Parks and Rec facilities have some very specific guidelines. An individual or group who has made exceptional contributions to the City of West Palm Beach with preferences being given to contributions to Parks and Recreation Services, such as exceptional contributions could include donations or contributing significant funds for the acquisition or development of park facilities. Also, which, in this case, it's providing direct and significant volunteer services, benefiting the public or as a local or community leader. So this is not giving money, but this is contributing to the community as a whole. The procedures are that the individual or organization shall submit a written nomination for parks names along with the jurisdiction of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. So, so they have to send a letter to the PRC with their request. And the reasons need to be the proposed name, evidence of community support for the proposed name, such as a petition signed by the community members, vote of neighborhood association, near or the proposed park to be named, et cetera. The petition is to be submitted, or a letter must state the intent and include printed names, signatures, addresses, zip codes, and telephone numbers of each signer as proof of residency. All of the above must be submitted to me, the Director of Parks and Recreation, for review. And all applications will be presented to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee with staff assessment. The second step is the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee shall review the nomination in accordance with Section Three of our guidelines, research, review, and study the supporting documentation, and forward the recommendation to the City Commission for further review. So on August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Coleman Park Neighborhood Association sent a letter to Mayor James requesting the city consider honoring the memory of Mr. Paul G. Blackshear. The letter highlighted his thirty-nine years of a city employee with the Parks and Recreation Department. He was a coach, a mentor, dedicated, a visionary, a generous spirit, a leader, a teacher, a historian, an ambassador. He was a friend to all of us in Parks and Recreation. On October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee evaluated the request. PRC made a motion requesting staff bring before City Commission their request to name the new Coleman Park Gymnasium the Paul G. Blackshear Gymnasium. PRC unanimously voted in favor of the request. On November sixth, we then brought to a Mayor-Commission work session this idea of naming the Paul G., Paul G. Blackshear Gymnasium in Coleman Park. And the family members and community spoke on behalf of Mr. Blackshear, at which time, the commission, through discussion, based on the history of Mr. Blackshear, suggested that we bring before the commission this opportunity to name the gymnasium. Coleman Park is located east of Tamaran Avenue and west of the, of the railroad tracks between Twenty-first and Nineteenth Street. It is currently a big construction zone. So if you drive down there, you'll see all the construction of the new gymnasium, as well as the renovation of the community center. This is a rendering of the new gymnasium, which is under construction, that we are requesting today, before you, in this resolution, the naming of the gymnasium. Today, I have Ms. Fay Blackshear, the sister of... Today I have Ms. Faye Blackshear, the sister of Paul Blackshear, who will speak on behalf of the family and the community, as well as Mr. Michael Odom, the Chairperson of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, here to speak on behalf of the naming and the PRAC's unanimous vote. So, Faye, if you would like to please come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Faye Blackshear, speaking on behalf of my brother, Paul Blackshear. It's a great honor to be invited here with the city of West Palm Beach Parks and Recreation in memory of my brother, Paul Blackshear, for a life well-lived. For being on a job for 39 years with the city of Park and Recreation, he dedicated his life with children and seniors, showing a positive attitude of greatness. Always helping the community at Coleman Park, always had the affection and respect of others. A good and faithful servant. May his memory live on. And I just want to recognize his children from being here. Monique Reed, you can stand. DeAngelo Blackshear, lovely, loving stepdaughter, Angel Stutz. My brother, Norman Blackshear in the back. Okay, for being present for this dedication. And especially thanks to Kathy Gardner, Nellie Cooper, Debbie Rain, Erin Page, Lynn Highsmith, and Reverend Kenneth Allen. I know he's looking down on us with a big smile. Again, I say thank you very much.
Good day, the Mayor Commissioners. My name is Michael Odom, 1446 North Mangonia. I also serve as Chairman of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. As noted in the presentation, that we, my colleagues and I voted unanimously to approve the naming of the Coleman Park Gymnasium after Mr. Paul G. Blackshear. And we encourage you to follow suit with this resolution, with approving this resolution. As well as being a native of West Palm Beach. I've known Mr. Blackshear majority of my life. And I can actually attest to what I've seen him involved with the youth and the kids that he served through the Parks and Recs. In my career in social services, I've come to realize that people don't care what you know until they know how much you care. And Mr. Blackshear was amazing at caring about the kids that he served. I mean, so much so that he was very instrumental in kids that achieved in both sports and academically. But even more so, the kids that failed by the wayside still respected Mr. Blackshear. They even came back to speak with Mr. Blackshear for encouragement, for guidance, for anything that they may need, which to me, I know Mr. Blackshear was a very soft-spoken person and a very caring person. And the reason he was able to exhort all his knowledge into these kids is because they knew he cared. And as I said, for a kid, a kid know particularly if you care or not. The only reason they listen to Mr. Blackshear because he knew, they knew that he cared. So, I encourage you to approve this resolution. And it's an honor that's well-deserved of Mr. Paul G. Blackshear. Thank you.
That ends our presentation for today.
Very good, thank you. Any comments, questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Of course, overwhelming support for this item. But, you know, it just struck me that this item is before us today when we were just talking with school board member Erica Whitfield about what can we do as a city? And I think it is to encourage and inspire more Paul G. Blackshears to work with the city and to be in our community. It's an honor to support this today. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for bringing this to us. I'm very supportive of this. I love it that we can honor our hometown heroes. I think that Commissioner Ward maybe in one of our, in the workshop mentioned, you know, possibly having some kind of a plaque or recognition in the gym so that people know who he was and what he did and not just his name, but all the things that went into this naming. So, I hope that we were able to move forward with that. And just thank you all to the family for being here tonight. I'm very supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 301-23.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, we do have one card. I'm sorry, we do have one card. Hold the motion and the seconds. It's been properly moved and seconded, we'll get to the vote later. Ms. Annie Harrison Nelson. Ms. Nelson?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Ann Nelson, City of West Palm Beach. I'm here on behalf of the African-American Research Library and Culture Center of Palm Beach County to offer our support on behalf of Mr. Blackshear's nomination and his name to be placed on the facility at Coleman Park. Also, Mr. Blackshear was a resident with his sister in the Roosevelt Estates Neighborhood Association. And the residents of Roosevelt Estates also are in support of this nomination of his name to be placed on the facility at Coleman Park. I thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations to the family of Mr. Blackshear. Item 9.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5073-23, Amending the Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations to Provide New Language and Text Cleanups to the Definitions, Signage Requirements, and the North Railroad Avenue Sub-District Requirements.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Claudia Babin, City Urban Designer in the Planning Division. Just to let you know, there are no--
Hold on just a second. Let's let the folks get out. Okay, you can continue.
City staff does not have any changes from the first reading and we recommend approval.
Very good. Any questions? Comments? Any cards on this item? The clerk says we have a card. Well, that's on 9.2. This is 9.1. That's okay. Okay, hearing no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 5073-23 on second reading.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It was moved in second, discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk can read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance Number 5073-23, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 94, Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations, Section 94-109, Definitions and Minimum Requirements, Section 94-110, Signage Requirements, Section 94-124, North Railroad Avenue District, and Section 94-132, Transfer of Development Rights Program to Permit Newly Defined Covered Structures on Rooftops to Exclude an Interstitial Non-Active Parking Garage Level from Overall Store Counts, to Extend Mixed Use Signage Provisions to Commercial Properties Running North Railroad Avenue, and to Revise Nor Ground Level Setbacks for the new streetscape design. Declaring these proposed zoning tax amendments to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning and land development regulations of the city, providing a Complice Clause and a Severability Clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Item 9.2, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5075-23, amending the Code of Ordinances at Chapter 78, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Spaces, Article 18, Parklets, to revise regulations, standards, and guidelines for the design, construction, and operation of parklets within the Downtown Master Plan Area and Northwood Mixed Use Village, and Resolution Number 296-23, amending the Comprehensive Fee Schedule for Parklets Permits.
Thank you. Again, Claudia Babin, City Urban Designer. For this item, city staff does not have any changes compared to first reading and we recommend approval for the ordinance and resolution.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments, Commissioners? Well, we do have one card, Sandy Makovich.
Somebody left a pair of glasses. Sandy Metkovich, West Palm Beach. First time I heard of this parklet item, it was with former Mayor Jerry Muyou. A parklet, according to the agenda, a parklet is the seating platform that converts curbside parking spaces into vibrant community spaces that may provide amenities such as seating, landscaping, bicycle parking, art, among others. Keith, does this mean residents are going to lose more downtown parking spaces? Because what these parklets are, you're actually placing a table in the street against the sidewalk, which my generation calls the gutter. I don't know how anybody could sit there. I mean, the sky opens up pouring rain. A dinosaur's feet gonna get wet? I don't care, I'll never be sitting in them. Question, how about the city face the handicap parking signs so it can be seen and a driver can signal their intention to park? By the time you see the sign, which is parallel to you, cars are lined up behind you. You can't signal. You should be able, all over Florida, you should be able to drive down the street. It's, oh, handicap parking up there. You put on your directionals that you're gonna park there. At least that's what I do. Keith James has been aware of this since he's taken office, because I complained about it since he's taken office. He won't have the city crew place the handicap signs out of spite. He's just a spiteful man. He won't do it. But I'll keep mentioning it occasionally. Maybe if one of you Commissioners would like to put a little pressure on him. He's taking this very seriously, sitting there with a smile on his face. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 5075-23, amending the code requirements for parklets.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk can read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance Number 5075-23, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances at Chapter 78, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Spaces to amend and replace Article 18, Parklets, to revise regulations, standards, and guidelines for the design, construction, and operation of parklets within the Downtown Master Plan Area and Northwood Mixed Use Village, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. We need another motion, Commissioner Fox?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 296-23.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It was moved in seconded, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Item 9.3, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5076-23, granting an aerial pedestrian bridge easement to KJWPB-1 LLC across Eucalyptus Street, a city right-of-way between 740 and 840 North Dixie Highway.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Suzanne Burglin, the Assistant Director of Engineering Services for the City of West Palm Beach. And there have been no changes since the first reading. And with that, city staff recommends approval of Ordinance Number 5076-23.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 5076-23.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It was moved in seconded, discussion. Madam Clerk can read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance Number 5076-23, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, granting an aerial pedestrian bridge easement to KJWPB-1 LLC across Eucalyptus Street in the area between 840 North Dixie Highway and 740 North Dixie Highway, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9.4, Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance Number 5078-23, amending the definition of special event to specifically include large group feeding, adding a time to process a large group feeding special event application, providing for waiver of the permit application fee, and making other minor modifications.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, Arlene Frankenaro, Assistant City Attorney. This ordinance today is presented as an amendment to a previous ordinance that you all passed earlier this year. That ordinance dealt with large group feedings. And the three major changes here tonight are that the prior ordinance limited large group feedings to two parks, excuse me, two times per park per year. This ordinance changes that to five specific parks, two times each per year. All other parks are not limited to this two-times limitation. The other major changes including, excuse me, include a timeframe for review and approval or denial of a large group feeding permit within a certain amount of time of receipt of a timely filed, fully executed application. Finally, the other major change is waiver of the application fee and security deposit for a permit in certain circumstances. There are minor clarifying changes, including in a definition clarifying that there's an appeal of a denial and providing for an alternate permit if a preferred location is not available. I actually went through that without doing my PowerPoint. So, the PowerPoint goes through all of that and details out some of those also minor changes that we're looking to have made. So, staff does recommend approval upon first reading of Ordinance 5078-23 for tonight.
Thank you. Can you take us back on the PowerPoint? Because it wasn't displaying--
Yes, sir.
--where it showed the actual changes?
Yes, sir. All the way back to the beginning, sir?
Well, wherever you have the underline and it's not showing up on our screens here. Okay, go back. Okay, go, I guess go forward, just to show us where the actual changes are.
Very good, sir. Thank you. So, the five public spaces or public parks are Curry Park, Waterfront Commons, including Trellis Covered Area and the outdoor areas surrounding the Lake Pavilion, Nancy Graham Centennial Square, Meyer Amphitheater at Sunfest Park, and Post Park.
Okay.
And it is not more than two large group feeding permits issued to the same person, group, or organization for the same public space and/or city-owned park in a 12 consecutive month period for those five particular parks. Again, no limitation on any of the other City of West Palm Beach parks. Just indicating again, appeal of a denial of a large group feeding permit is per or Section 78-162. The established application fee and deposit are waived in certain circumstances. The time for review of approval or denial of a permit on or before the 10th Business Day, following receipt of a properly and timely filed application. The criteria for review of that application are listed in those particular subsections of 78-154. There are also particular grounds for denial that are outlined as well in 78-154. There is a provision that for an alternate permit, should the permit application-- There is a provision that for an alternate permit, should the permit application be denied, an alternate permit can be offered for another location. And it delineates how the applicant can then respond to that applicant permit, excuse me, alternate permit. The definition of special event specifically includes that part in yellow, large group feeding as defined. And again, the minor changes, we had special event, the definition itself has particular conditions. In other words, a special event is a special event if it has one or more of nine special conditions. Two of those special conditions, they were all condition or, condition or, condition or. Well, two of those were missing the or. So we added the or. We changed, large group feeding had sort of this, this mouthful of, you know, you can't apply too soon, but don't apply too late. And it talked about months, it talked about weeks. So we made clarifications so that it's consistent with using the weeks instead of months. And we just modified so that city-owned, or that park is actually public space and/or city-owned park to make that a little bit more clarificate, clarify.
Okay.
Those are the changes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Paduzzi?
Just a brief question. This doesn't actually change the permit requirement for these events at the other parks. Just puts specific guidelines in place for the parks that are in the downtown region, correct?
Yeah, correct, Commissioner Paduzzi.
Thank you.
It doesn't change the other requirements under that chapter for special events.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We do have one card. Sandy Makovich.
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. This is the one I come down for. What's missing in this whole bunch of crap is the word homeless. You all know I was arrested for feeding the homeless. Had to go to court three times, worried to death about my dog, who was gonna take care of my dog if I got sixty days in jail. So yous are all aware of that. By the way, thank you, Keith. And thank you, city commissioners, for voting what he was foolish enough to ask for. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance five zero seven eight two-three, blah, blah, blah. You know what that is. You're making minor modifications, because the court threw it out, said it was illegal. You couldn't do it. Do any of you know a man by the name of Jason Irwin? Is that name familiar to any of yous? You probably don't. He's not a developer. He's not a well-to-do resident. He doesn't own a multimillion-dollar condo in West Palm Beach. And I'm sure he never contributed any money to your reelection campaign. Mr. Irwin was homeless, lived in Coleman Park. And he passed away this month trying to save a woman who fell into the intercoastal. Died trying to save a woman's life. This is the type of person you are hurting if you pass this ordinance, if you give Keith James what he wants. Now, let's say Mr. Irwin hadn't bathed in a while. His clothes have seen better days. He was not pleasant aesthetically as downtown West Palm Beach. He really didn't fit in. So any one of you people was strolling down Flagler, and I've seen them strolling down Flagler, and they come to a homeless man. They cross the street. So you're strolling down Flagler, you slip and fell in the water and needed help. And Mr. Irwin reached out his hand to help any one of you. Would you care if his clothes were dirty, or would you reach out and grab his hand? Anybody want to answer that question? I'm gonna wait for your vote, then I'm going home. Lakes are killing me tonight.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments on this? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number five zero seven eight two-three.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number five zero seven eight dash two-three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at chapter seventy-eight, streets, sidewalks, and public places, Article Six, Special Events, Division One, Generally, Section seventy-eight dash one-five-one definitions, and Section seventy-eight, one-five-five, reservation of dates, application fee and deposit, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item, we're about to go into quasi-judicial. So commissioners, I need you to make your disclosures, please. And we'll start with Commissioner Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. As to items ten point one, ten point two, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. As to items ten point one and ten point two, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
President Warren?
Mayor, as to items ten point one and ten point two, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. As to item ten point one, I have had experte communications with the applicant and the representatives, as well as many residents. I have received written communications in the form of emails. I have not conducted an investigation. I have made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. As to item ten point two, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions.
Commissioner Warren?
I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Ward?
As to item ten point one, I have not had experte communications. I have received written communications in the form of an email from residents. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. As to item ten point two, I have not had experte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Whatever one wishing to speak on items ten point one and ten point two, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Item ten point one, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number five zero seven two dash twenty-three, a request by Josh Martin of Frisbee Group on behalf of Three Nineteen B Renaissance Two Asset LLC for a future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation, a plus or minus zero point six five acres of the overall subject, plus or minus one point zero one acre parcel located at the northeast corner of South Dixie Highway and Belvedere Road from Commercial C to Commercial East CE.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Linda Louis, Principal Planner for the Record. So this is second reading of the ordinance, and I just wanted to make note of a couple things. The first is that there is a minor typo in the agenda. So the affected area of the future land use map amendment is actually zero point six three acres and not zero point six five acres, as noted in the agenda. Secondly, just a reminder to the commission that after first reading, the commission voted to add a condition to require the site plan for the development of the property to receive final condition, final consideration by the city commission. This commission, this condition was added to the ordinance after first reading. So second reading tonight is just for the future land use map amendment. No site plan is being considered tonight for approval. Site plan approval will require the approval by the city commission when that time comes. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. The applicant is also present tonight if you do have any questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before you're from the applicant? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much for adding that language that we discussed on first reading. I have a couple of questions that I just want to ask about that. The first is, and I believe we discussed this in the first reading, but what if the property changes hands? Does that condition stay with the property?
That is correct. The condition will require any redevelopment of the parcel to be considered by the city commission for approval. So whether or not the parcel is sold to a different developer, that condition is in place.
And I'm sure there's no hard and fast rule, but I would guess that there's best practice. Can you tell us what is the best practice, or how often do developers request these changes prior to this, as in this case, the future land designation, prior to submitting the site plans?
Well, there is no requirement for the land use map amendment to require a site plan. It is common that any application for a land use map amendment is heard. You know, typically, it's, the thing that's being analyzed at the future land use map amendment stage is the level of service analysis. The site plan usually comes hand in hand with the rezoning or site plan itself. So it is quite common. In this particular instance, there is a split land use, and the developer is wanting to consolidate the land use for the entire parcel so that they can come in with a site design for a cohesive redevelopment project. So it is common, we have seen applications in the past where there are split land use designations for a single parcel, and they have come in to change the land use, to consolidate the land use, to make it more effective when it comes time to redevelop the parcel.
Thank you. Additional questions, Mayor?
Yes.
Can you, and I don't know if you have a slide presentation, but I remember we discussed FAR in the first reading, and there is, in one of the designated areas, it's one point five, and another, it's point seven five. Can you talk a little bit about how, if this were approved, how that's affected?
Yes. So right now, the site, as I had mentioned, is currently split. So the western half is point three eight acres, and the west, eastern half is point six three. So the applicant is requesting to change this point six three to CE to consolidate. So that would provide for a one point oh one acre CE land use designation for the entire parcel. So based on the current future land use designation, the CE can allow for a mix of units, and that only allows for twelve units based on the acreage of the Commercial East. Regarding the commercial portion, you're, you can have a maximum FAR of point seven five. That would enable a square footage, building square footage, maximum square footage of twenty thousand five hundred and eighty-two square feet. And that, you know, essentially would allow for administrative approval, but with the added condition, any redevelopment of the site will require commission approval. So based on the future land use map amendment, as I had mentioned, the applicant is wanting to consolidate the land use to Commercial East. That would enable to, the developer to go up to a maximum floor area ratio of one point five FAR. That's a total of sixty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-three square feet in terms of the amount of residential units that can be permitted. Based on the calculations, it's thirty-two units, plus they are required to have at least a five percent proportion of commercial. That's two hundred, two thousand and two hundred square feet of commercial. That's the five percent requirement. This requires a plan development approval. So if they want to achieve the one point five FAR, they would have to rezone the property to a commercial plan development.
Follow-up?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're all clear on this. When you, you made this yellow arrow pointing over to what they could do, but then at the end, it's, has a asterisk that it requires a plan development. So which is it? Is it that we're?
So the future land use allows a maximum FAR of one point five. That's the umbrella. When we talk about the zoning of the property, which is currently general commercial, as is right now, the general commercial zoning designation allows an FAR of point seven five. If they were to rezone the parcel, based on what the zoning and land development regulations allow, if they were to rezone the parcel to a commercial plan development, that would enable them to reach the one point five FAR.
Okay, and, but today, they're not asking for?
They are not asking for a rezoning. It's strictly the land use map amendment, which gives them that cap or ceiling of one point five FAR. If they wanted to come in with a rezoning to a commercial plan development, that's the only way they could reach the one point five. But as it stands right now, the parcel is zone general commercial, and at this time, they're limited to a point seven five FAR.
And should they come forward and ask for the plan development, they would have to do that at the time with their site plan?
Correct.
Thank you.
President Warren?
I understand the applicant's desire to have a consistent land use amendment, and I also recognize that they were solution-focused in coming forward with a recommendation to change the, the language. When, if the property changes hands, would there be any, would we be able to legally stand on anything that is imposed today that we're, that has been offered by the, the current property owner?
Yes, your approval of the ordinance is in fact adding additional conditions on that particular piece of property through the action that you take. That is something that is of record, and somebody looking to purchase property would be aware of when they purchase the property.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this item? All right, we have several cards. We have a couple of cards that did not want to speak.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I didn't know. Is the applicant gonna present?
Well, that's true. Do you have questions for the applicant?
I would like to hear if there's any updates or any further comments.
All right.
Thank you.
So I'll just, just reiterate that, again, as Linda said, we have withdrawn a site plan application that we did have on file with the city. It was communicated that that had not been withdrawn, but it has been withdrawn, and Linda's here. And we sent a note to the neighborhood with a willingness that we want to work with them through a site plan. Whether that's a rezoning with a site plan or just a site plan, we still have to come back to you. But we've scheduled a meeting with them this Wednesday to have that, that next step of talking about site plans for the property. And so we're committed to that. And, you know, we've said this before, if it's something, at the end of the day, if we get to a site plan that's not, does not want to be supported, then by the, by this commission, then we understand that. And you have the last say in this. What we are doing tonight does not increase the FAR by right tomorrow. So if tomorrow, it's still point seven five. And so I think that's an important part of this. And again, we stand committed to meet with the neighborhood and work with the neighborhood. We received a letter on October twenty-seventh, and we've already become very up to speed in working to address those issues. And we stand here in public record to say we are committed to work with the neighborhood. We do this every day, all day, with various neighborhoods in the City of West Palm, Palm Beach County, Town of Palm Beach, and what have you. And so that's our commitment to the commission. And again, you have the final say on this. And tonight, we're not, we're not here to vote on a site plan, but we're here requesting a future land use amendment to inform us as to what that site plan will be, because it's either residential or a residential and those types of things. So that's, that's where we are. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Well, if, if we have any questions, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Actually, questions for our city attorney. I just want, in the ordinance, the language, the second sentence that kind of discusses what we talked about on the first reading says, in review of the site- "In review of the site plan, the city commission will make its decision based upon the applicable development standards contained in the zoning and land development regulations." And so, it's my understanding that that, our regulations, if, if they don't present any other requests for changes, would be of an FAR of .75. Is that correct?
The purpose of the comment, or the purpose of pointing out that the, when the, if, if and when the commission reviews whatever site plan comes, you will have to apply the standards that are in your code in deciding whether or not to grant that site plan, just like any other site plan that you review. So, if it's a PD, there are requirements that go with the PDs that you look at. And that, those will be the review standards. You still will have standards to apply. Yes?
Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, while you're at the microphone, can you please remind us what the standards are in a quasi judicial proceeding?
Yes. When you actually get to a quasi judicial proceeding, which is what your site plan review would be, you're required to do three things. One, you have to apply the correct law, which in that case really depends on what's presented to you. Is it a PD, or is it a different site plan review? And you will apply that site plan review standard. You also have to have substantial incompetent evidence that you look at that tells you whether or not the application before you meets the requirements of the standards that are before you. And finally, you have to have notice and an opportunity to be heard by that applicant. So, those are the standards that you generally apply in a quasi judicial manner. This is, this before us tonight is not a quasi judicial, but in the future, when it comes to you, that will be.
All right. Very good. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right. Now, we will turn to the cards. I'll start with those folks who did not want to speak. First is from a Robert McClary, who says, "For 319 Belvedere, why change land use amendment without site plan first? Please do not approve without site plan. Another developer putting huge project in small site requires five acres, only one acre." Another one from McKinley Stewart Johnson. "I support the Frisbee Group's project at 319 Belvedere and the change of the future land use from commercial to CR8." All right. Those are the individuals that did not want to speak. We have several cards for those who want to speak. I'm going to call out four names at a time. And if you could start positioning yourself to approach the podium, that will expedite this process. Four names, Douglas Taylor, Hikaru Sato Hua, Patrick Keenig, and Brad Keenig. So, Douglas Taylor, Hikaru, Patrick and Doug.
I'm Douglas Taylor. I live at 317 Cordova Road, which is right in the heart of El Cid. I think the thing that surprised me most tonight so far was the fact that only one commissioner, Christina Lambert, has seen the site. Right now, the Frisbees are trying to rush through a site plan change. We're getting short notice in El Cid on the change plans that are going through. We think that the whole process should be slowed down dramatically. What you see happening in the area in El Cid is ad hoc review of any site development. There's no big overall plan on what to do with that corridor on Dixie Highway, going down to Belvedere and beyond Belvedere. I think the most surprising thing is that a building that's 62 feet tall right on Belvedere to the entranceway to El Cid, and that's the main interestway, Belvedere, when you're driving in to El Cid, to have that huge building on the north side of the street is just going to be a disaster for the neighborhood. This is the historic neighborhood, and it's the premier historic neighborhood in West Palm Beach. And the neighborhood would like to see it saved, not changed or destroyed by this kind of construction. And it's not only this project from the Frisbees, but it's what's going to happen with the carefree development too, because this sets a major precedent for the whole area. So, we'd like to see this slowed down and a more comprehensive approach taken to what happens with the development in the area. It's just critical for the, for the historic area of El Cid. We don't need the Frisbees coming over from Palm Beach to develop West Palm Beach when they can't even do this project in Palm Beach. It would be turned down in a heartbeat over there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hikaru Sato Hua?
Hi. My name is Hikaru Sato Hua. I live across from the site. I live on 235 Belmonte Road. I think all of our residents in El Cid spend significant amount of money to preserve the area of a historic site. And we, you know, literally live across from the site. It doesn't make sense to combine a new commercial area in the, in the historic site. And what I heard, that this building is going to be 62 feet, which overshadows my house, and which doesn't make sense in this beautiful historic residential area. And we're literally next to each other. And we, we hope that, you know, you can work with us to plan the future site. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Keenig?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Keenig, 505 South Flagler. I understand the concerns of the two previous speakers for sure. However, you guys are going to have another look at the site plan. And certainly, the future land use plan amendment enables residential uses on the east side of this site, where the existing is now currently all commercial. The, the land use plan amendment encourages the creation of a site plan that would hide cars, create some curb appeal. And, and right now, we have a sea of parking out there with a low commercial building that's been there forever. The added dwellings will actually reduce traffic tremendously. For every thousand square feet, according to the traffic performance standards, for every thousand square feet of commercial, it generates the same traffic as 13 residential dwellings. Every thousand square feet generates the same traffic as 13 residential units. Mixed use projects create a sense of community. And I believe a mixed use project here will create a sense of community with people living on site as well as shopping and enjoying the property. So, I encourage you to approve this land use amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Keenig?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Brad Keenig, 333 Southern Rollevard. As a, as a property owner in the south end, I support this future land use amendment. By adding the CE designation, this allows the developer to create a site plan that provides residential uses on the eastern portion of the site, and will make a future development more compatible with the nearby properties fronting Olive. I drive past this site every day on my way to and from work. And this is currently the only commercial use fronting Olive for about a mile to the north and south. This change will help the site conform to the other surrounding uses and residential uses on Olive. I think a future development will be a great improvement to the, to what's currently on the site. I respectfully ask for you to support this change. Thank you.
Thank you. I have four more names, Catherine Strickler, Jean Hudlett, Karen Steele, and Kevin Lahat. If you could start making your way toward the podium, please. Catherine Strickler?
I'm echoing my neighbor's request to postpone approving the?
Could you state your name for the record?
Oh, my name is Catherine Strickler. I live two blocks from the proposed site. I'm echoing my neighbor's request to postpone approving this future land use amendment to commercial east until we are able to come to a mutual agreement with the developer on a site plan. All of this has felt like it's been rushed. And whether that's the developer's strategy, we're also very thankful that they're willing to work with us to come to a mutually agreeable development. But approving this future land use amendment without a site plan will encourage more dense development without careful consideration of how it fits into historic, surrounding historic districts. An important element of the future land use amendment exists to promote historic preservation. And this is a unique section along Dixie Highway with historic districts on both sides, and three sides around this specific site. So, it's been frustrating to learn that the standard code would even allow the possibility of building five stories in the immediate vicinity of a historic neighborhood. So, my point is, why wouldn't a developer try to, in this case, upzone? So, I request that you all please recognize and explore the need for an additional zoning tool that has height restrictions and has the purpose to preserve, revitalize, protect, and enhance significant older areas within a community beyond what is specified in the standard code, and to promote development that is compatible with the existing neighborhood character. A more comprehensive approach to South Dixie Highway and how it is developed is needed to eliminate this possibility of upzoning. And we want to encourage thoughtful development without having these preservation efforts fall on the neighborhood associations and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jean Hudlett?
Good evening. My name is Jeanie Hudlett. I live at 190 Valencia Road in El Cid. The El Cid neighborhood continues to be concerned about what's being considered on Belvedere Road. Our concerns include the height, density, traffic, and parking, which is already very critical in our neighborhood. So, we would ask that we see the site plan that's, will be presented to the commission before it's consolidated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Karen Steele?
Mayor James, Commissioner, nice to see you this evening. Thank you very much, first, for your efforts at the November 13th meeting to?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Karen Steele, 267 Barcelona Road, El Cid co-president. Thank you very much for your, your consideration at the last meeting, November 13th, to give us a chance to have the review of site plan before the final decision is made to go ahead with this project. Unfortunately, there was some confusion, misunderstanding, perhaps on our part, maybe with others, about what this meeting, when the site plan was going to get reviewed. As Josh noted, that we are going to see it on Wednesday. And as the others have mentioned, we had requested, we would like to request that this decision to consolidate be delayed until after we see a site plan and have an opportunity to work a little bit more with the Frisbees to answer our concerns. What's of particular concern to me was what was brought up a little while ago with a question that went to Linda Louis. Linda and I spoke this afternoon. And if you look at Table 1 on page 39, it says, "Proposed commercial east would be, allow for a 1.5 FAR." Tonight, there was discussion that you couldn't get to a 1.5 FAR unless you went to a commercial plan development. So, I mean, once again, we are faced with, where are we? Are we, are you approving? If you approve this tonight, if you can approve, what my conversation was with Linda this afternoon, is that if you approve the combination of these two segments, one segment being .6, or, yeah, .6, and another segment being almost .4, into one acre, that that would bring the FAR for the commercial east to 1.5 with a 65,993 feet, square feet capability. I'm asking the question, I don't know what's correct now. Is this, is this what's going to happen? If you, if you consolidate tonight the land use? Or do, is it gonna, are they going to have approval to do this only if they go for a commercial plan development? Which, from the beginning, was what they were doing, and canceled it or put it on hold for November 13th. So, once again, we're here saying?
Thank you very much.
Please consider that. Thank you.
Kevin Lahat? Lahat?
Hello. I'm Kevin Lahat. My family and I live at 224 Pershing Way, where we're residents of the El Cid neighborhood. We're four houses away from this plan development. I'd like to thank the commission for the time that you took and genuine concern that you showed in the last meeting about what was proposed as a 50-foot-plus tall structure. You clearly shared some of our concerns, particularly about the scale of the development, which is far too big for a historic residential neighborhood. However, moving forward with the approval today, and this language specifically, would do very little to address the scale issue that many of us have. Unless the site is classified as a budding residential zone, it could be built to the ZLDR at over 50 feet tall, or 50 feet tall with a five-foot setback, or 60 feet tall with a 15-foot setback. Since the language says that the commission can only use the ZLDR, the commission would then be forced to approve this 50-to-60-foot building because it complies with the ZLDR. I'd like there to be a definitive clarification tonight on whether the site is deemed to butt a residential zone. This was not clear in the prior meeting, but is critical to this matter. So, if you agree that a 50-to-60-foot tall structure is really not appropriate for a historic neighborhood like El Cid, right across the street, on two sides, from historic homes that themselves can't be over two or three stories tall, we really should not approve this language, and we really should not approve a rezoning until there's a simultaneous review of a plan, which would include its height. Thanks again for your consideration.
Thank you. Four more names, Susan Rothman, Jonathan Low, Scott Worley, and Amanda Skyer. Susan Rothman?
Good evening. My name is Susan Rothman, 1200 South Flagler Drive. I believe that the beauty, the quality, and the historic preservation that the Frisbee Group brings to their projects will enhance our community. And it's just unparalleled. A good example is the South Flagler House via Flagler by the Breakers. I think that the Frisbees' work speaks for itself. Like the other gentleman said, I think that we're going to see a reduction in traffic. And it's certainly something we need in that area. And then, the approval, I think, will enhance the value of the homes. It'll contribute to the tax revenue, and it'll enable neighborhood projects to be funded, such as playgrounds, youth programs, and certainly, infrastructure improvement, which we need. So, I would ask that you approve the land use amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Low?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you again for your consideration and attention to this matter. My name is Jonathan Low. I live at 2101 South Flagler Drive, and I'm the co- I live at 2101 South Flagler Drive, and I'm the co-president of the El Cid Historic Neighborhood Association. We remain hopeful that the developer will produce a site plan that the neighborhood can support, as they have repeatedly promised they will do. But we have no guarantee that that will happen. And frankly, we don't see the urgency in approving the land use amendment until we've seen the site plan, particularly since the previous site plan presented to us was, in fact, 55 to 62 feet in height across the entire length of the property. We would like to ask you not to reject this plan, but to postpone your consideration until we and you have had an opportunity to review the site plan. That is our simple request to you, to postpone consideration of this. And we're doing this in order to assure that the city gets the best possible project it can, as well as our neighborhood. And I'd like to end by saying that this is not just another real estate deal for us. These are our homes. This is our neighborhood. This is where we have chosen to raise our families. And we are hoping that a project reflective of those values will be built. But we do ask that you work with us to help us work with the developer to assure that that happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Scott Worley.
I want to thank the commission and the mayor for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Scott Worley. My family owns a business in the community, in the neighborhood. I'm the CFO of Castle Wealth Management. But my purpose here tonight is to speak as an advocate for housing. I've been an advocate for housing for the last 30 years in Palm Beach County. I sit on the Palm Beach County, I chair the Palm Beach County Impact Review Committee. I chair the past chair of the Building Code Advisory Board, the Construction Industry Licensing Board, and Palm Beach County Land Development Regulation Advisory Board. We have a housing crisis in Palm Beach County and the city of West Palm Beach right now. We do not have adequate housing stock or land available to build on to meet the current or the future needs. That's an adverse effect to all the citizens of both the county and the city. And I would encourage the commission, whenever they have an opportunity, to support the potential for new fair and balanced housing, that I recommend that you do that. The staff report is well-written. It's fairly clear. The staff is supporting the position. This is not a approval, anything other than the land use. The site plan would have to come through at a future date, and I would encourage you to approve the ordinance as staff has recommended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor James, President Warren, and members of the City Commission. I'm Amanda Skyer. I reside at 234 Pershing Way. I'm an expert in historic preservation, and I've served as the city's Historic Preservation Board Chair for the last eight years. As someone who's very familiar with quasi-judicial hearings, I'm hearing, I want to say that I'm in complete agreement with what you said, President Warren, at the last meeting, that you do not have enough information to determine the impact of the proposed amendment to the future land use map. You were asking the right questions of city staff, but they were unable to give you definitive answers without a site plan. At face value, it appears reasonable to request that residential be permitted on the eastern half of the site, but there are unintended consequences. Your approval of this amendment does not immediately double the FAR, but it does open the door to a rezoning request for a commercial plan development that is not permitted under the current land use designation. That commercial plan development would result in a project that is much larger than what has historically been on this site or what was intended by the current land use map designation. It's also important to note, that has been said by other members of the community, that there is no height limit for a commercial plan development. The current land use map designation intensely sets a lower FAR as 319 Belvedere enters the El Cid Historic District, which makes sense considering the scale of the surrounding properties. There are multiple sites abutting Grandview Heights, Flamingo Park, and Sunshine Park Historic Districts that also have this split designation. In light of that fact, I contend that this proposed amendment does not meet the adopted objectives that you adopted under Goal 3 of the Future Land Use Element, which states, quote, "The city commits to support, foster, and promote historic preservation efforts and a sustainable environment." If you approve the proposed Future Land Use Map Amendment, you are sending a message to developers and real estate investors that you are open to upzoning, that will negatively impact not just El Cid, but multiple historic districts along Dixie Highway. There are many white papers that have been written, including by the Brookings Institution, about how upzoning encourages land speculation. Mr. Martin's point during his rebuttal at the last meeting was that their approval won't set a legal precedent, but it will certainly serve as an example for, of the city commission's tolerance for upzoning requests and encourage a new trend along Dixie Highway, which would not be sustainable for these neighborhoods or the city's already strained infrastructure. I respectfully request that you propose, you postpone for a third reading until you have more information, and that, really, you need a site plan now, and they would have to already come back if they do a commercial plan development.
Thank you very much. Alex Milan.
May I hand out, I have some printouts.
Off to the clerk if you want to give them.
Thank you.
Alex Milan and Nicholas Bixler are the next two speakers. Alex Milan.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Alex Millen. I'm a property owner on the south end of the city, and I think the proposed map amendment is a logical solution to the site's current split future land use, and it creates a unified designation for the entirety of the site, and this would allow for a more cohesive and integrated mixed-use design, and would allow for residential to be built on the eastern portion of the site, which is what directly abuts the residential neighborhood. Currently, the future land use of the eastern portion of the site only allows for commercial uses, which would add to more noise, traffic, and higher parking requirements. I think the developers, time and time again, outdo themselves when it comes to their thoughtful approach and flawless execution at delivering world-class projects for cities and neighborhoods. So I kindly ask that you support this amendment for the future land use change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nicholas Bixler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Nicholas Bixler, 1970, South Dixie Highway, or Magnolia Courts, if you will. I'm here today to support the Future Land Use zoning amendment and just that. I think the conditions set forth are wise, and I think that is something that is sensible to get behind at this time, and I think it's important to re-center this and note that a site plan, you know, proposed at a later date would be back here before you all. And also, in general, we're not talking about upzoning single-family to commercial or to multifamily. We're talking about something that is already zoned commercial and making it more cohesive. I think, as someone who lives on South Dixie Highway, it's a little bit more prudent to have the residential closer to the residential area and the commercial closer to the commercial area. But again, I think all of these things will be addressed more formally in a site plan that comes before you. But I think today, it's a good opportunity to support the amendment to the future land use zoning, so I appreciate your time in letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A quick question for either staff or the city attorney. With the new language that's been added, the actual site plan, and that language runs with the land, has to come to the commission for approval?
Yes, Mayor, it does. And I did want to correct the record, because I made a statement earlier that was not factually correct. This is a map amendment, and because it's applicable to a single site instead of the city as a whole, it is, in fact, a quasi-judicial hearing, and when you make your motion, you'll be deciding whether or not it complies with the requirements of Florida Statute, Chapter 163, and Policies 1.1.5 and 1.1.6 of your comprehensive plan, and that's part of the motion that'll be made tonight, and I just wanted to make your record clear.
All right, very good. So-
And yes, the site plan, based on, if it's approved, the ordinance has written, it constitutes a change to your ordinances, your code of ordinances, that would require site plan approval to come back to the commission. Yes.
And if there is an application to, for a plan development, A, that must include a site plan, and B, that also comes to-
That does, under Chapter 94207. Yes.
And when those come to this body, the public, there's notice?
There is public notice requirements under Chapter 9439.
And the public has an opportunity to weigh in and address us at that time, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
So this is not the last opportunity that people will have a chance to voice their opinion on a site plan, if and when it is presented. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I do want to clarify and ask the question that Ms. Steele was asking. Can they, are they permitted to build at 1.5 FAR without the commercial plan development
They cannot. They would have to rezone the site to a commercial plan development in order for them to achieve the 1.5 FAR.
And it was also brought up that this opens the door, and I understand that this zoning would open the door for them to apply for that, but they would have to apply, and at that point, we could approve or reject that application, is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. That was my question, Mayor. I'll pass.
Commissioner Ward.
This may be for a legal question, but if we approve to commercial east and they move forward, I guess, I think, from what I'm hearing, the concern is, what are our constraints as far as if we don't want, if, you know, if we agree that 62 feet or however many feet are being proposed aren't applicable, that's a personal preference? Is there something that says, hey, when we would go to potentially discuss this, that these certain requirements were met, and so we wouldn't necessarily even have a say on how tall the building is? Or would we have a say on how tall the building is?
We can probably both talk about this, but every time that you, you're talking about, in the context of a plan development, you always look at what's proposed before you and apply the standards, and whether or not, because of the design that they've put forth, it should be granted, this site plan that's in front of you. But it, but it's really, it depends. What are they going to apply for? What are you looking at? What are the standards that apply? You kind of have to fill in those blanks in order to answer your question.
Do you want to weigh on that, Mr. Green?
I was just going to comment. Rick Green, Development Services Director. I mean, this situation is very similar to what you just saw with Temporal Israel. They came in with a change of the land use. Ultimately, we will see a rezoning application for a project that's coming in, which we haven't seen yet. With regard to the plan development, it's no different than what we did with the Bristol, LaClara, Forte, all of these projects that have come in. They sought approval of a plan development. The plan development allows some flexibility in the regulations. It's up to city staff making a recommendation, the planning board making a recommendation to this body as to whether the, what is offered through the plan development is a benefit to the city. So there are standards that we look at, but it allows a lot more flexibility. But until they file that application for the plan development, the FAR continues to rest at that 0.75 FAR number.
Follow-up.
Follow-up.
Yes, thank you. And one resident mentioned not deeming to be a butt to a residential zone. I didn't really catch that in the material. Can somebody comment on that, whether that's the case? If that was-
I didn't, I didn't hear the beginning of that question.
One resident said it wasn't deemed to a butt a residential zone, or is it deemed
Per zoning and land development regulations, there is a definition for a butt, and that is a shared property line between two parcels. So in this instance, it does not abut residential because of the roadways that separate the parcel from the residential. It has to be a shared property line.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I want to follow up on the line of questioning that Commissioner Ward was asking about, this is what I was getting at prior to resident comments, is when, if and when we are reviewing a request by the applicant for a commercial PD, is one of the parameters that we might be able to use, let's say we decided we didn't want to approve it, could one of the parameters potentially be that it's not contextually appropriate to a historic neighborhood?
Need more information for where it is in context with the outlines of the historic neighborhood, but one of the things that the staff will go through is they will look at the surrounding neighborhoods that are appropriate to be reviewed in deciding whether or not the innovative planning and design that's being presented to you benefit the public in a manner that you should or shouldn't approve, but you still will have standards to apply. And yeah, that's the type of thing that the staff would review and look at. Is it in context to the surrounding neighborhood, whether it's historic or nonhistoric? Does it work? Does it fit?
Thank you. Mayor, I have a question for the applicant. I just want to make sure that I understand kind of the timeline here and what's happening, because there's been mention about a meeting this week on Wednesday, and my understanding is that, or maybe I should just ask, what is the agenda for the meeting on Wednesday?
Is to review a new site plan that we could go through and address all the concerns in the October 27th letter, and have a discussion about those concepts of height, scale, and mass. We've got parking, we've got loading, there are a lot of different concerns on that letter that came from the El Cid Board. So what we've been doing is going through and going through and addressing all of those as part of that process. And so that would be the purpose of that meeting, is to review and discuss those concepts.
Okay, and, you know, it's, it's just really interesting that we're here today, because, you know, two months ago, I was hearing from the neighborhood how much they appreciated working with this group, and that the Frisbee group was the model developer, that we should be, you know, holding all of the other developers, you know, to this high standard. And I appreciate that, because that's, I think, what we all want on this day is to balance the, you know, the growth that we have in our city with what our residents want, with what we as decision-makers see as a need for this community. So I've always really appreciated, you know, the follow-up and the input that you reach out to the neighborhoods for. And so I just, I feel like we have mentioned this a number of times, but I want to hear it from you again. Can you just talk to us about what you anticipate is the process, should this be approved today in moving forward and working, continuing to work with the neighborhood, to come up with a plan that we can all live with?
Well, I'll first start out by saying, just kind of read your first part of the statement, Commissioner, if I may, and that is, I don't know of one investment in the real estate sector that this firm has made that someone wouldn't be proud of.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That someone wouldn't be proud of. And whether that's neighborhoods, we work in neighborhoods, very contextually sensitive and very thoughtful processes. So our commitment, as I've said before, and will say it again, is that we will continue to work with the neighborhood to come up with a plan that we can all support. And so that is something that we, I've said into the record a number of times with the planning board in front of the commission, and my whole career has been around working with neighborhoods. When I was at the city of Charleston, South Carolina, in the mayor's office, I managed 101 neighborhood associations in the nation's oldest historic district. So historic preservation is also very much in focus with me in my, in my whole career. And so, so yes, we will continue to work with the neighborhoods. You know, I get blamed sometimes for maybe spending too much time in the public and working with the public and getting the input, but I feel that that community-based planning for your positions and for the neighborhoods and making a city a better place is what it's all about. And so that's what we're committed to as a company.
Thank you.
All right, any other, Commissioner Ward?
Josh, I'm still putting you in the hot seat. Do you think 62 feet is contextually appropriate in that area?
We did not, and we pulled that out of, with the site plan application that was withdrawn from the city. And so that's why we're going to revisit those heights and scales of mass. You, we have to take, this concept of height is one variable. We have to look at different things, because there are different things that contribute to the overall height, scale, and mass, which actually relates to the context-sensitive nature of neighborhoods. And so we, that's one of the things that we are going to address. The city, or, excuse me, the city, El Cid sent a letter on the 27th, and the first bullet point was height, and it was talking about an average general height across a site at a certain level. Maybe there were some ways to shift massing away from the neighborhood and toward Dixie, and those are the things we've been working and were, and, you know, these, we are very good at Rubik's cubes, and this is just another Rubik's cube. Everything we have is kind of a Rubik's cube, so if we're used- of a Rubik's cube. So we're used to dealing in this and working with the neighbors. So, you know, I'm confident that, and we're confident, that we'll get there. And so that's, again, that's a pledge to you. And as always, we self-imposed a condition on us last meeting. I don't know many people that would, you know, typically do that. That's how committed we are, that we want this, whether it's a site plan that would typically go to staff level review, we've conditioned ourselves that it comes to you. So any site plan is coming to you. Any rezoning future application is coming to you. And we take all these things seriously. That's why we withdrew the site plan application, because we felt like we were not in line with the neighborhood. And so now we're rebooting that effort, and that's what our pledge and commitment is. And so that's where we are.
Thank you. And just to follow up, so you're not showing them a new site plan on Wednesday?
We're going to show some concepts and talk about the responses to what we heard from the formal letter. And we're still hearing some comments and questions, and we're taking those into account. You know, we have everything in this box. There's parking, there's loading, there's height, scale, and mass, there's context-sensitive nature, there's, you know, adjacent to residential, or adjacent to landmark totem on the other side, we're on a busy highway on South Dixie. We're always constantly wanting to raise the bar in terms of architecture and design. We have a world-class architect on the team, and so we're very excited about that. So we've got work to do, and we're pledged and committed to do it, and we look forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Thank you again to everyone who came out tonight. I know it's getting late, and I appreciate being able to hear from the neighborhood. I think I said similar comments the last time, that I feel like I support the neighbors, and I understand that you want your neighborhood to be preserved and make sure that we have the best infrastructure and appropriate height and things in your neighborhood. But it's also hard, I think, to have a developer working on a project where they don't actually know if we will approve residential, for example, and what would be the point for them to even continue with that kind of idea if we're not going to end up approving it. So I feel confident in the developer. We've worked with them before. I trust them to be good on their word and to work with the neighborhood. I think we're lucky to have a developer. If it's not going to be them, it's going to be someone. That property is going to be something in the future. I would much rather it be something beautiful with a developer that we trust, that is willing to work with the neighborhood. And it is going to be coming back to us. So I am going to support this tonight, but I, again, want you to know I'm listening. I'm getting your emails. I'm happy to talk to you at any time about other questions that you have after you've seen the new project this week and the new ideas. I haven't actually seen them, and I look forward to it, but I think it's better that we find something that the neighborhood can endorse before it comes to us for approval, too. So I support this tonight, but I am definitely listening, and I want you to know that. So thank you.
Any other questions, comments? That's all the cards. So if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just one comment before I make the motion, just that I think we have a developer here who has expressly commented time and time again and shown us that they want to work with the neighborhood and that they have even offered a self-imposed condition. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to come together, to create a project that we can all be proud of, and hopefully will address some of the current issues we have at this site, and most definitely take into careful consideration the historic nature of this neighborhood. And so with that, I would like to move for approval of ordinance number 5072-23, changing the future land use designation of plus or minus .63 acres of the overall plus or minus 1.01 acre parcel located at the northeast corner of South Dixie Highway and Belvedere Road from Commercial to Commercial East. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, the factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the provisions of Chapter 163 Florida Statues and Policies 1.1.5 and 1.1.6 of the city's comprehensive plan based on changed assumptions.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Removed and seconded. Any further discussion? President Warren?
I'd just like to say that this particular item has caused me a tremendous amount of pause because I am listening to what the residents are saying, and my concerns are the true history of the community and not doing anything to compromise what the residents have held valuable. And that's where I will be able to move forward is because of the track record and the history of the people that are proposing this change. So I'm just looking forward to everything that you're doing to be consistent with what you have done historically and that the residents of West Palm Beach, particularly those in Elsie, are very happy with everything that happens as we move forward.
Any other discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5072-23, in ordinance of the city commission, in ordinance of the city commission of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, by changing the future land use designation of 0.63 acres of the overall 1.01 acre parcel located at the northeast corner of South Dixie Highway and Belvedere Road from Commercial to Commercial East, declaring the proposed, I'm sorry, Commercial East, declaring the proposed amendment to the future land use map amendment to be consistent with all other elements of the comprehensive plan of the city, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Here in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10.2, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5077-23, designating the Locust House, 1225 North Sappidilla Avenue on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Kent Wilmoring. I represent Lynton Jog Associates and the new owner of the home, Josh Schillman. He couldn't be here, but I'm representing both of us. We want to thank you all for helping us move along this journey of this house that was moved from Hillcrest 30 years ago to its new home, renovated, and a new owner. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Wilmoring before we hear from staff? Okay, staff?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Anne Hamilton, Historic Preservation Planner, presenting ordinance number 5077-23 for a designation at 1225 North Sappidilla Avenue. This is a site on the corner of Palm Beach Lakes and Sappidilla Avenue in the Northwest Historic District. The request is for the redesignation of this building known as the Locust House that was built in 1925 and was originally located in the Hillcrest neighborhood in its new location. This is a view of the site with the new home on it. Formerly, this was located, you may have seen it, at 464 Fern Street in the downtown. It had been moved here from the Hillcrest neighborhood in the 90s, but redevelopment on the site necessitated this and the other yellow building on that site to be moved to a new location. One of the conditions of the move that was put on the case from the Historic Preservation Board was that the building would be redesignated in the new location. The case meets all applicable codes, and we are recommending these finding of facts. This was approved 7-0 by the Historic Preservation Board at the August 22 meeting. The subject building is historically and architecturally significant. It was constructed in 1925, which was more than 50 years ago. The Locust House is an excellent example of mission revival-style architecture. The subject building is identified with the land boom period in West Palm Beach, 1920 to 1928, and the loss of the subject building to the city would be significant. So we're recommending approval and scheduling second reading for December 11. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Questions for staff or comments? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5077-23 on first reading and schedule second reading for December 11, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion here in none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5077-23, in ordinance of the city commission of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, designating 1225 North Sappidilla Avenue as a historic site on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places, providing a conflict clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Here in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Since item 11.1 is removed, it's now time for comments from the public. And I think we only have one card. Correct? And that card, did not wish to speak. It's marked "General Comment," but I think they meant to speak on item 10.1. So the comments are in regards to 10.1. "I support the reimagined 319 Belvedere Plaza. I am a homeowner in Elsie and truly believe this project has tremendous potential and will certainly enhance the beauty and charm of our historic neighborhood as for generations to come." So I guess, this is from Javier Gonzalez, 220 Almira Road. So I guess he'll be happy with the vote since we've already voted on it. Okay, now we will turn to comments from the dais, and we'll begin with President Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure we'll probably all comment about the same things, or quite a few similar items. Please join me on Thursday, November 30, to witness and be a part of Sandy, the tree lighting ceremony this holiday season. You're invited to join a Holiday in Paradise, not only with Sandy, but also Ferris the Ferris wheel, the Holly Jolly Pirate Ship, live music, Santa and Mrs. Claus, and much more, the entire month of December, from December, the entire, the entire month of December, between 6:00 and 10:00 p.m. Winter in Paradise, which is an extension of Holiday in Paradise, happening next evening on Friday, December 1, at Heart and Soul Park, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. I invite you out as we light up the park with holiday lighting, followed by a special art commemoration. Come enjoy food, vendors, marching band lights, and lots and lots of fun. There will be a toy drive on Friday, December 8, at Blue Mountain Coffee House, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., which is located at 540 Clematis, Unit 3. And I'd like to wish a very happy birthday and happy anniversary to my colleague, Christina Lambert, wishing you the best of everything. And congratulations to Commissioner Fox and Commissioner Ward for being unopposed in your reelection. Congratulations to you both. And that concludes my commission comments.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not go over the same items, but I do look forward to seeing everyone at the Sandy Tree and at Winter in Paradise. I am also very much looking forward to the next two years, so thank you very much. I'm looking forward to continuing the work that we're starting up here together and working with residents to improve all of our neighborhoods. So thank you very much. And Mayor, I also just got an email that you'll be in Dubai, so I'm hoping that you're going to tell us a little bit more about that. That sounds exciting. And that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Good news travels fast. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. I did want to say thank you to my colleagues for the fun little birthday celebration and for all the birthday wishes tonight. I definitely have, first of all, Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday. One, because you get to eat a ton. Two, because great football games are on. But three, because it's just, our whole family comes together, and it's just a time of celebration and of thanks, and it just so happens to be my birthday around that time. And I've just have felt the gratitude more so than ever this year for some reason, and maybe as Commissioner Warren mentioned, it coincided with my 10th wedding anniversary. And, you know, for those of us who have passed that 10th wedding anniversary mark, it's not easy. And I just want to say thank you because, you know, not only to my husband for being such a great partner, but, you know, as with raising a child, you know, as with being in a good relationship, it takes a village. And it really, I think, is a testament to this community. And so I just wanted to say thank you. And on that note, I wanted to, what I wanted to mention was that tomorrow is a phenomenon called Giving Tuesday. And if you haven't already selected an organization, a charity, or something to give towards, I encourage you to look at the many different organizations that are helping individuals in our community. The one that I will be giving to speaks to what our school board member, Erica Whitfield, was talking about in homelessness. There's an organization that we highlighted during COVID called Holy Ground, and it is their mission to shelter and mentor homeless, pregnant, and parenting young women and children. And they work right here in West Palm Beach. And so there are just many organizations that help the young families and children that she mentioned earlier. So thank you all so much. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Commissioner Paduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. And like my colleagues, I'd like to wish Commissioner Lambert a very happy birthday and happy anniversary. And congratulations to my colleagues, Commissioners Fox and Ward, on your reelection. We are certainly blessed to have you here with us, and the people of West Palm Beach are blessed to have you advocating for them every day. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
I guess I sound like the broken record. I'm the last. But, I mean, we already talked, but, you know, we were enjoying the pictures from your wonderful trip. I was getting very envious. I almost was like, I need to pause you because you're having too much fun. But I was also with family and having fun, and I think Thanksgiving is one of my favorites, too, just because you're about, it's about being thankful and spending time with family. And while I was away, I was still watching social and seeing the mayor and our police and our other staff volunteering and taking the time out. And even before that, my firm and myself did a drive at one of the local schools, Seth leading such a charge when it came to the other turkey drive and the diaper drive. And so I just feel like there are so many people in this community that come together around the holidays to really show that they care and try to support each other. And it's, it just pushes me to want to do more and give more and surround myself with that positivity. And just, I wanted to mention two things. Was, there's a rain barrel giveaway, 55-gallon rain barrels. I have one in my backyard. They're awesome. It's happening Wednesday, December 5, Gaines Park at 5:30. And then FAMU and UF Cooperative Extensions are hosting a deliberative discussion on food systems in South Florida on Friday, December 8, from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. in the Mandel Public Library Hibiscus Room. And I also did see the news press on you going to Dubai. If you need a stand-in, you know, just let me know. I'll be there. It's very exciting.
I got this. Okay, so first of all, congratulations, Commissioner Fox, Commissioner Ward, for your reelection with our position. I think that speaks volumes about the job that you're doing on this dais, and you should take that as such, as a statement from the community, that they are pleased with the work that you're doing. And I look forward to continuing to serve with you. I trust everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday filled with fun, family, food, and football. You notice the alliteration there, the Fs, four Fs. It was a pleasure last Tuesday to work with Parks and Rec and so many members of our team here at the city to help serve a traditional Thanksgiving meal at Pleasant City. It is, in my view, the highlight of the holiday season because you have the opportunity to interact directly with members of the public who are in less fortunate circumstances and an opportunity to really help them. So you've heard about all the events for Sandy, and also I did want to highlight, and also Sandy and the Winter in Paradise, I won't repeat that. We do have another Soul in the City Jazz Experience coming up. Guitarist and producer Adam Holly has burst into the contemporary jazz scene as a celebrated and innovative artist, composer, and bandleader. He has worked with Maurice White, founder of the best musical group in history, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. That happens to be my favorite. of the best musical group in history, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. That happens to be my favorite. And he's, he first debuted on that Legends label, Columbo Music. Adam has four albums and worked as a producer responding incredible 13 Billboard Number One hits. His fifth and current album, What Christmas Means to Me, is his first holiday offering, and has proved to be an exciting twist on the Christmas music genre. Adam will perform a dynamic combination of scintillating, unique holiday arrangements, original contemporary jazz selections, and he will be performing on Wednesday, December 13, at our Lake Pavilion, which we are honored to have him there. So tickets are still available. Visit wpb.org for complete details. And so since, as it has been mentioned, I do have the pleasure of representing the city of West Palm Beach in Dubai later this week and into early next week. I now will be at the, the United Nations each year has a global climate conference. This is COP28, and for one of the first times, they are having local officials, including mayors, sit at the table and participate. And through the generosity of the Bloomberg Philanthropic Foundation, as you all know, Michael Bloomberg was a former mayor of New York City, and since he has stepped down as mayor, he has been very active in putting together events and opportunities for the training of mayor. But his philosophy is that as policies are adopted for climate change and other, mayors need to be at the table because we will be the ones either adopting the policies and certainly responsible for implementing them. So he graciously has funded travel room and board for a select group of mayors, and I was fortunate enough to be among that list. Only 45 of us are receiving this opportunity. And so I will be taking the story of West Palm Beach, what we have been doing in our climate change and sustainability journey, and certainly with listening with open ears to hear about best practices that other communities are doing and, you know, trying to roll up my shirt sleeves and contribute to that fight as much as possible. So truly is an honor for me. It's an honor for the city to be recognized as a city that needs to be at the table. So I will be bringing back information. I'm stating publicly, my wife is, will be going at her own dime, you know, although this is, it's not funny, but Bloomberg is flying us over on business class, and I can say honestly that my wife will not be flying business class because that is a $17,000 ticket. And I'm just a mayor. I'm on a fixed income. And anyway, but we found her a lower-priced ticket, so I'll be up in the front, and she'll be back there. But, you know, she's willing to do this. But she is insisting that we ride camels when we are in Dubai, and I am resisting that effort. The true, the true test of my marriage would be whether there are pictures of me riding a camel when I return. So we'll see. But in all seriousness, I'm looking forward to the trip. I've never been to Dubai before, and I will represent the city well. So that's all I have for tonight, and I'll bring back pictures. Thank you all very much for all you do.